Time being 7:30, I'll call this meeting of the Westbury Water Planning Board to water. The first thing on the agenda is going to be...
Throwing out the window.
It's going to be a public hearing for plans... Wait a minute, can I cast off the rock on this? This is...
This is MJM. MG...
Yeah, I guess I got tattered.
Well, then you took the right one.
I got the right one.
Okay, the first thing on the agenda is going to be MJM Construction on Manly Street.
Do you want this copy for now? Got it?
Yeah, I got it now. I'll start out by reading the public notice. It was published in the Enterprise. Town Westbury Water, Notice of Public Hearing. Notices hereby given pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter 58, Section 9, and Section 4.4, Contractor Yard, Section 4.6, Water Resource Protection District, Section 7, Site Plan, and Section 7.5, Special Permit of Westbury Water's zoning bylaw. So, Westbury Water Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 5, 2020. At 7:30 in the McDonald Brown Conference Room, submitted by MJM Construction to discuss a modification to an existing special permit. The modification includes converting a single-family house into office and the addition of a six-device, 125-foot contract, the five-bay rental building relocated at 586 Manly Street. A special permit is required for activity in the Water Resource Protection District. A site plan review is part of the special permit process. Copy of the proposed proposal is available at the Office of the Town Clerk for Review. That being said, I'll ask Mr. Greg Driscoll, an engineer with Jacob Strickell Engineering, to explain what they're proposing to do. Mr. Driscoll, it's yours.
Thank you. Thanks, Jim. So, a year ago, we filed for a special permit and site plan review for conversion of this used family house, but I think it was an office for the previous owner as well, and the construction of a storage building right here. That was all approved. Since then, we've decided to go ahead and build the first contractor bay building for a remainder of the property, which goes back pretty far. This isn't a... Overtentions already for this high-side wetland to be moved down here, starting a replication plan, everything all done and approved. So, the rest of this property, we're looking at options for developing that. That's a future thing, where it's going to be contractor bays or one big building. What we want to do is, this building right now, first contractor bay building, because it's up front more, the grades are compatible to the existing stuff up here.
Excuse me, could you tell us what sheet so we can kind of oil it on?
Sheet four and five?
Two more out now.
Come in? Yeah.
You're here for the special permit?
Hi, I'm... This is Mr. Bambiglia of MJM Construction.
Oh, okay. Why don't you grab a couple chairs?
So, under the previous approval, work has already started for this parking lot. This building's already started. The renovations to this existing building have been done, and their office is operating for the business out of this building. Previously, we had a detention basin designed here and contractor yard in this area. So, basically, what we're doing is flip-flopping those, and so we're moving the contractor bay, I'm sorry, the contractor yard to the front area where there was a previous detention basin located here. That detention basin, we redesigned, go back here into the slope area, and we designed a five-units contractor bay building where the yard was. Mr. Bambiglia has already talked to a couple tenants that are interested for two different tire uses. One would be tires for trucks, trailers, stuff like that. And then the other one would be more regular cars and trucks, passenger vehicle tire use similar to, I guess, maize.
Yes.
So, that's where the special permit comes in, in the water protection district. So, we already had a special permit for all this. We're looking to modify the site plan to expand, to shuffle around these things, the basin back here at the building, move the yard, and the site plan modification. Everything that's happening over here is as designed for the original under construction, except the system, we just, in order to add this building, since it's pretty much second warehouse type use, we were able to add, I think, just one row of the chambers that were previously designed, submit a revised plan to, or how they've already approved that, so that's all set. Any future development would have separate subject systems further down because the site drops going in that direction. That's pretty much what we're asking to do.
Hey, in. Greg, in. This area here. I guess you threw the plexiglass in there. What are you putting in there? You're calling that to be a contractor's yard. What is that going to be?
That's a little hoopac he's... Machine, his business is excavation, so he'll have bulldozers, excavators, trucks.
He's presently using it for people to pick up materials, right?
Correct. That's on the other side of... That's on the other side of, if you...
Of the bar?
Way up.
Oh.
Yeah, right there.
Where's the house fund?
Right there.
That's... Oh, okay. So, we're... Okay, now I know where I am. So, we're between... We're actually in the first lot that you established.
Yes. So, we wouldn't make anything... We wouldn't pave it. We'd leave it all pervious, so we...
Have you got any screening, because isn't it residences across the street?
Yeah, we're showing a fence all along here and here.
Okay, what kind of... What...
There's a burn there. Yeah, and a burned barn as well.
But it isn't labeled as such. Is it... I see a dash line there, but...
Yeah, going on the X's.
What sheet are you looking at?
Five.
All right, okay, I'm looking at five also. I see a dash square, but I don't see it labeled.
Yeah, sheet four, the layout plan, proposed six-foot chain link fence with privacy slats. The screen can drop from this room.
Okay. That's okay, that's what I was looking for.
And then it's also part of this, this entrance, as we had before, on the previous supplemental, the last plan for this area, we stopped the parking lot right here, but now we have an entrance go back here so these people can have direct access.
Now, where are they going to be selling the tires, where they would be in the car?
In this building. You get somebody taking like two spaces and then one?
Two spaces.
Do you know which ones are they ever...
First two on the other side, other side, yeah.
Over here and in the middle?
Correct.
So, are they just going to be selling tires, or are they going to be doing any repairing of vehicles?
I think light repairs, like alignments, maybe brakes.
Installing the tires, selling the tires, installing alignments.
Maybe brakes, if that's really... Any products that they need to have would be prepackaged, something we had talked about with the garage, that special permit, that has to be prepackaged and stored in secondary containment pallets or in the building.
See, in the original permit that was granted on... Oh, 11 November of 19, so last year. The conditions, and I might as well read them all, compliance with water department regulations, compliance with conservation regulations, which we've already alluded to, no hazards, fluids are fueling, will be allowed on site. Now, where you fuel your equipment on the job site, would you take it to a job site?
Correct.
All liquids will be safely stored, which means in their... In their containers that they...
They're just gonna pack it.
Fencing, tree screening, okay, you just talked about that. Lighting will be installed on all buildings and will shine down on the site, not on the main. Are you proposing any lighting in this contractor's yard?
Off the building.
So, no light poles on here?
No.
In that building, in that building, but...
Correct. Off the new bays over there, we probably have a couple of lights facing the back.
Okay.
Nope, the other way, towards the parking lot.
Oh, going out.
Okay. Okay, but as far as the contractor's yard, you know, what I'm getting at, is that going to be lighted?
No.
Right next to it, so you're just going to depend on the streetlights on...
Correct.
Okay. Floor drains and tight tanks in the warehouse will be required. Have they... Have you started that building yet?
No, we have not.
Yeah, so we have a dumpster waste water hole and tank design for this building, and this is the one that was originally designed for that building, so.
Which is a tank within a tank.
Yes, like an ex...
Yes.
Let me know what I say, because I have to sign on the certification.
It's in.
All right, I'll come look up.
So, it's... Is it safe to say that what you're asking for is, in the amended decision, is to kind of juggle, take something that was here and put it there, and then put this here and put it there, just kind of juggle it around a little bit?
So, in addition to a building.
And the use of the building, which will be the sale of tires?
In a sale.
Is that all of it?
Yes, and if you lease the other spaces that are remaining there, or you said that might need a special permit?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to have... I mean, I'd love to have five tire guys here, but I don't think we're going to have five tire guys in the same building, so I think that would be...
We're aware that if somebody starts to use...
So, if something else comes along, you'll...
Subject to all safety constraints.
I'm sorry?
If any additional renter in there is subject to the same constraints.
Yes.
Work that's been already performed has been performed in accordance with previously approved fundamentals.
Correct. We should actually be submitting pretty soon the as-built on this last building, if we haven't already.
Should go that way?
Correct.
Putting alarms in there, I think, right?
I wasn't aware of the alarms.
Yeah, it's putting a alarm float, so that you know when it's, it's been pumped.
Okay.
A sign on the side of the building.
Does it call for it?
Uh, there's a little...
I will deal with that.
The real is it though?
Well, Westbury Water, it has to be annually inspected, right?
Yes, annually inspected.
The inspection sent to the building inspect.
Do you do any snow plowing, man?
We do.
Do you... Okay, because I'm reviewing the water resource, and it is, one of the things that is prohibited is stirring of de-icing...
We don't do that on site.
...such stirs, including loading areas, is within a structure design to let the generation and escape of contaminated runoff or leach. Do you...
We don't store salt on site. We supply the snow plows, and the city of Brockton supplies the salt for our sanders. We don't have any of that on site.
Okay.
Correct. But we do snowplow.
Where is the snow stirrer?
We've got snow storage shown on this log down area up here, along the side here, right along here. Probably should have added one over here, but, you know, that'll be an area as well. It's what I thought of. We just can't... Can't dump it in the basins. I know that. Pretty too fine. Yeah, we got a few spots shown.
Okay, I see it now, because that's one of the things. And you're not doing any repair... You don't have anybody in there doing repair of vehicles, so?
No.
Do any of the board members have any further questions?
What about repairs to your own equipment?
Mostly, it's a snow operation that we worry about, snow plows. I mean, I'm not saying an incidental wouldn't happen, but it's not the cause of it. Our stuff is to have our storage for our equipment, our comp actors, our snow plows that'll get stolen, that's our majority of our... That's why we got that building.
Okay. Okay, we have to make some findings. Pursuant to Section 4.6, the board must make an affirmative finding that proponers have met the criteria for a build that is, A, is consistent with the proposer's intent of Section 4.6, appropriate to the hydrology, natural topography soils, and other characteristics such as... As far as your... Topography, you're not changing very much how you break?
No.
Pretty much to the updated level. I know you're doing some work out there, as far as the area.
Yeah, both to build a basin and all that, and that's all been moved up by conservation. We have a stormwater permit ready, or modified stormwater permit.
Okay. Will not during construction or thereafter have any adverse environmental impacts on any of the zones of the water protection district. You will not adversely affecting existing or future well site. There's no proposals to future existing office in that area, so... I'll entertain a motion that these four things have been...
So moved.
That they have been... They meet these standards, okay. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then again, another section, pursuant to the Section 7.5.3.1, the special permit granted, I'm sorry, shall not provide the application for this mission unless it finds any material touching, listed, site, is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw and subject to consistency with the conditions stated as... A, this specific site is in appropriate location, such as used structural conditions. It's in the correct zone, it's land-wise, it's needs to be protected, the property, thank you. B, the use is developed and operated, will not ask, directly affect the environment. So, how... Just reiterate, if you would, Greg, how this will not adversely affect the environment.
We are in an industrial zone, proposing a industrial use. It's pretty consistent with the other uses in the area, and there's an electric business up the street on the other side, so.
And you're supplying screening?
And we're supplying screening.
There will be no nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians while volume greater than the capacity of speeds affected.
No, huge traffic generator type of use, very little pedestrian activity in the area, so.
Adequate and appropriate facilities will provide it, that kind of truck, I think. For the proper operation of proposed use, you supply tight tanks, you supply drainage as access to the site or the streets is appropriate for the type of vehicles involved. You're not bringing any kind of vehicle that is not intended to drive on the street, are you?
No, it's trucks.
Okay. I just have to answer the question?
Right, okay.
That's all. Okay. I'll entertain a motion to affirm that proponers have met all the above criteria.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, we come to the conditions. I think we should retain the original eight conditions that were in the original proposal, since we're only doing amendment. Talked about, okay, the tires. One of the things is, will there be any outside storage of used tires, or will they all be put in a...
No, they'll be put in a container.
In a container, and then?
Yes.
So, as a condition, then, all tires will be kept in a container, and there will be no... And removed as necessary, and there'll be no outside loose storage of tires?
Correct.
How that would sound okay?
Can we put in a concealed, slotted fence, maybe, type deal, that if we were to have anything, like we put that around a container, so we have like a six-foot chain link fence or something, so that if...
Like a dumpster enclosure?
Yeah, like a dumpster enclosure, that if we were to have something other than the container, if it were to overflow, we put it in the concealed area so nobody could see it locked. Is that a possibility? Because they can't see it.
Yeah.
I mean, the notion of concealment, like you would for a dumpster, I think is a good idea, but the idea you use it just to conceal what might be overflow, I think that's not the intended purpose, and not a good idea. Unless it's on a cement slab.
Correct.
I think if you have used tires, which burn for days and days and days if they have a bad story, right? And you reach a little of the container, I think the immediate act should be to empty the container, not to make sure that it's properly concealed.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Add containers if needed.
Yeah, add more containers if they need it. That's fair enough.
I think that's... I think that makes more sense.
We've all seen the old tire dumpster we used to have. We haven't... There aren't too many of them left.
I'll take a ride to Maine, there's still a few up there. Yeah, all the tires would die.
They had to.
By the trailer a little bit.
Yep, 100 yards.
Okay, was there anything else you got in here? Okay, and I think we should have in here that any use that is not specifically allowed by the zoning or in this district shall mandate coming back for another minute.
If the assumption is not specifically allowed, it's not allowed.
Right.
That's a special permit.
Yeah. That way, if you want to put in something, come back and get it. As long as you can mandate the standards, we'll be okay with it, but... Anything else that anybody has thought of, please, I think so.
The snow storage area is shown on your... After snow removed from this side, right, can I... Is that snow removal from remote locations?
No, 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 no. He did the calculations first.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah, in fact, that's one of the things aren't allowed, is bringing in snow from the area with the ice in it. That is one of the things. This being a special permit, it needs to be a supermajority, which is of a five-member board, it has to be four members. So, in this particular case, because one of our members is absent tonight, it's going to have to be unanimous vote. I will entertain a motion to approve this amendment with the conditions as previously noted.
So moved. Second, it looks good to me.
Is there any further discussion? Might be in any, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous of the four of us. We will be writing up a decision much like what we did before. It has to be filed with the town clerk, who has a 10-day appeal hearing. As soon as that is over, the town clerk will sign the appeal hearing, and then you'll be able to go upstairs to the building if you have any, if necessary, for that.
Yeah, I just got one thing. I have my neighbor here, and he's... We've been kind of having a little issue with, on the right side of our property there. Can you point that out, where the snow area is?
The snow here?
So, it has a bunch of trees on the long line, like, I mean, tall trees. It's right on the property line, it's split the property line. The gentleman wants to put a fence up. I'm really hesitant on putting a fence up, because it's a vegetated area. I don't want to take the barrier down. So, I'd be happy to split it, but I don't want to take that vegetation.
Mr. Rosa?
Yeah. I just don't want to take that vegetation down, and then I have a house there that's exposed when I have 30-foot trees there.
Well, as long as you put up a six-foot...
Right, but they want to clear the vegetation. I don't want to take the vegetation down, because then it opens up the whole neighborhood to look in, and it takes the barrier away from us. So, I will do what the board wants, but I don't think that's the appropriate action to cut down trees along the fence. I mean, if they want to put a fence on the outside, I'd split the difference, I'd accommodate it, I just don't want to take the vegetation down. That's...
When you say split the difference, are you talking about the property or the cost?
No, 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 just the fence installation of it, because...
Cost of it?
Right, yeah, the cost of it, because you don't need it in the first half of it, and it's really not a board decision, but if that makes the board happier, I'll do it, but I don't want to cut it.
Anything on Mr. Rose's side of the property line? When you put the fence on the property line, anything on his side of the property line, we can do anything you want with it.
But he wants me to cut.
On your side?
On his, on my side and his side.
On his side, you can... If he wants you to do it, you can certainly do it, but on your side, that's your property. If you want to keep the vegetation...
All the streets are going to be inside, because I got all dead trees over there, one's got a bad weather, everything's going to fall off my driveway. I mean, it's been for me and for him, you know, because last winter, I got a big branch coming on my yacht, I just, I got it cut off myself, so I don't want to do that again, so.
So, he's saying is that the trees are on my side, but he wants to cut them down. I just disagree, but if the board feels that that's what needs to be done, I will happily do it, but I just don't feel we should.
As far as the zoning regulation, between a commercial use that you have and a residential which you see he has, it calls for stockade or, in the case where you did the chain link with the privacy strips in it... Privacy strips in it, that, that meets the regulation. What you do on your property, as far as cutting down, this is upland, if it was down in the west.
Correct.
We'd, we'd be talking something different. It's your property, you can do what you want. So it's, it's between you two what you, what you do. We can't mandate either, either one.
Does it, does it call for, have to put up a fence to ask for privacy and safety purposes, or do they have to split the difference?
It, it has to be either a fence, or if there is adequate.
Vegetation, which there is.
You, you can, do like, if you've got abrevities, a nice six-foot high abrevity hedge or something there.
Just so we're clear. Just so we're clear and the board's clear. I'd be happy to put the fence on top of my property, I'll split the fence, I don't need it, but if it makes you happy, I'd be happy to do it. But I don't think it's, I have vegetation, I have a wall there, I'd be happy to split the difference, but I'm, I don't feel that it was there before me. If the board wants me to put it up, I'll put it up, but I have 30-foot trees, 40-foot trees there, I'd be happy to do what you guys want, but I, I mean, at some point, we've got to work together, we can't just, it's not just about a handout. So if you want to get a number on a fence, I'd be happy to pay for half of it. I just, I'm not going to take the trees down and then have, be looking at your house, and you sell it 10 years from now, and then I have a neighbor that's looking at me through a six-foot fence. That's all I'm trying to say.
Does, does the proposal call for a chain link fence though?
No, because there's trees there.
No, it doesn't. Because, because there, there is a fence and vegetation.
Thank you, sir.
If his, if his tree is coming down my property, who's going to, who's going to be responsible for these things?
That's between you and him.
It's beyond the scope of this board and this hearing.
Yeah, we don't have control of trees falling down.
Okay, there's, there's one other thing we have to address here also, is site plan review. We have to do, do the site plan review. Was there any cut, Donna? Was there any comments from other boards regarding site plan review of the site?
Anything we got is in that manila folder there, yep, with the bill there, and I don't.
Is this?
Think so, yeah, the 170, 250. That's the postage, you've already paid for the advertisements, but the bill here is to just the postage to send out the notices. So it was like 170, 250.
So make this up to the city of Westbridge Water?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't see.
Yeah, I don't believe anybody did, but it's been a while since I looked at it.
I would say no. So we have a site plan review, which we pretty much did the, the last time, it made some changes.
I'll make a motion to accept the site plan as presented.
Okay, a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the site plan review of the site. All those in favor?
Aye.
The vote is unanimous, it only needs to be a vote of a simple majority, which it would be, but the vote is unanimous, so that too is approved. We will, we will notify the building inspector to that effect, so we, you need those two things when you upstairs, the building inspector.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you for coming in. Kevin. Guess that's why it stuck that in there, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't forget my cabinet. Dr. Peterson's dentist.
That's why we've got a set of time.
We have to set a time when we will be, be voting. Do you know, okay, these were submitted July 28th. Where do we? They used to put the, they used to put the dates on here when we could have.
There might be some, I don't know, there was something from him, but I'm not sure if it was for this, or, it would be in the mail that I gave you.
That's why he's not putting dates on it. Maybe. Okay, but, no, but when, when he distributed it, to the town clerk, we see, but when did Mike? Because we. I'm going to give them, to McCall, find out when he, when he distributed it. That's a, that's a date.
You, in the mail, there might be something on that date that, because he did send emails and said he had distributed, and I believe that was part of it.
Okay.
So it might be there.
Okay, that was on the 29th, I don't know, let's see, it's over here. Okay, I use the July 30th policy, packages have been submitted to the various boards. What we can, let me just.
That's the 343 to 349?
Yes.
Right on, okay.
These two lights.
We really don't have the dates.
This is so bad, we, we did for the house over here, we did that septic repair a couple years ago.
Three days.
For Dr. Peterson sold the property. So we already had that, and then we pulled the information for the one next door.
Is the towing still in effect?
As well.
I know that most of them up there have had, are quite high-raised systems.
Until the termination.
The poor restaurant, they just have, they can't build a big enough system on their, they can't build a big enough system on their, their site, it's like pumping every night.
No, but the, the, the other boards have the opportunity to review it and get back the site, because I know like the, it's on the selectmen's agenda tonight, to submit something back. So it was done on the, on, on the 30th, so it'll be the first meeting in September.
Okay. Fair enough. Any plans, anybody any questions, or?
You're eliminating, eliminating all entrances down to one, right?
Yes.
I think there's like two or three entrances between the other buildings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a little bit of three, right?
Yeah. Dr. Pete, you know where, like, Big Diddy's restaurant is? Like, they break with?
Yep.
It's, it's between there and, and the attorney's office. His dentist's office, and then he owned the other house, they're combining both of them.
So it's Dr. Peterson's office. He, he passed away, I believe, Dr. Ababah's practice is this building and this house, which we had done a septic repair a couple years ago, for Dr. Peterson. And, and knock all that down, and probably he's going to have his, he's down, right across from the station right now.
Yeah, he's smiling.
Yeah, healthy smile. So he's going to move this, this office up here, he's going to have some extra respectable space for office or utility or something as well.
Have you got screening against the residential?
We did. We had a sheet for, this is channel fence, it's along this portion, we replaced with vinyl, six-foot vinyl sockets. So on here, there's an existing, on this above her, they have one existing here, so that takes care of it. And this is not a business use, but there, that's one existing as well. And that was a lot of, it's not a business, but it's still, still approved. On this, but from a vinyl socket.
Oh, did, yeah, this is the one. Did, did you put a, a relationship to the, your assumed elevations to the?
Yes.
She level?
Shows in.
She places, she'd be on the survey plan, under note three. Okay, convert the datum. And everybody, E8, E8 is 27 lower. Stay level, but you're 101.
Exactly, elevation 73. Frank might as well put her on, no, she's.
Anything you've got in the front of that building, are you pushing it back as far as possible, in cases of expansion or one of six? So you get as much, you know, you've got.
Just parking 10 feet back from the property line.
Yeah, but if any drains or anything that would be if the?
Yeah, the drain is just under the parking lot, it's stuck back even farther.
Yeah, I'm just, just saying, I mean, I don't think any of us in this room will ever see it expanded, but in case it ever is.
Case it ever happens?
Yeah. We just kind of.
Drinks come through? I guess so. So this, this is between the education and property, I'm going from property to the parking lot, so it stays there. Okay, do we know the date of the meeting, first meeting in September, or not yet?
Let me look at my calendar here. September the 2nd. 7:30.
Same time, same place, as long as they don't get, roll back updates?
Pardon?
Same time, same place, as long as they don't get, roll back updates? Okay, yeah, does any feedback, comments from any boards or those four, and all that? Okay? All right, wrestle, cool to me.
Moving right along, we have no farm aid plans, we've got Manly Street, we've done West Center Street, CPA review of 477 West Center Street, 40B apartment building. Do we have a copy of the plan for that document?
Mike said he left one, so it wasn't in the mail, but he sent me an email, and he said he put it.
This is all the mail he did?
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
Okay, let me wing it, wing it then. I haven't, I haven't seen the plan, but I've heard about it.
Okay.
This is a piece of vacant land between the Honeydew Donut and Friend Street. They're proposing to put.
Just the one with the parking garage?
Yeah. It's either 24 or 28.
Must be a tall, skinny building.
Unit, it's could be, it's either 24, 28 units in it, but it have a parking garage. I believe it's going to be four stories tall.
Four stories, it's all of the 40B. I didn't think, I didn't think that was.
The building inspector said as long as they have an elevator, and they have an emergency generator, so that it can be operated with the power loss. That's because.
Anything that I dread.
That, that was, I, I.
Well, that's because, that's why they didn't go high and down the, on the golf course.
You look at like, like Bridgewater, that's six or seven stories.
Yeah, but Bridgewater doesn't have height restrictions, you know? I don't think.
Most towns do.
I know, but I don't think Bridgewater does.
Okay.
Maybe, you know, maybe. We were one of the few towns that had, I think it's 36 feet or 38 feet, it's under 40. 40 is four stories, and, because, and that's.
I thought it was, it was 30, 35, but whatever.
Usually you figure, we figured it's 10 foot of floor. That's what you consider a story.
So.
I just think it's a stupid thing.
He, he asked us to review it and come up with any, any concerns that we might have.
Which may be a issue anyways, right?
Yeah. I don't know, it isn't a water resource. But the water resource may be, get, get bumped because it's a whole removal thing, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how this is.
My question is, it's, you've got 28 units, what's the calculation per bathroom for septic system?
I'm going to.
You've got to have a septic system and a drainage system on a lot that, what, 100 by 100 maybe?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, right? I question very much, because they have to maintain, address their drainage, and they go to turn that, that vacant lot without an impervious thing on it into all, pretty much all impervious between the building and the parking and what?
That's why I'm, what I'm bringing it up for, is conservation, there was so much into this.
Well, well, they, they're going to be reviewing the.
So if we put a little bit of question.
They don't have any jurisdiction. With the, no, but they.
A runoff, they do, don't they?
The towns, the towns, wastewater, stormwater bylaw? It, it may get kicked out.
They're outside of the 100 foot, any 100 foot.
Yeah, but, but they administer the town's bylaw, which is, is very apt to get bumped with 40B, because it's a, it's a town regulation.
Yeah, that probably would.
Yeah.
Because it's not a con con, you know, they don't have to file an NOI or not yet, so.
They just, they're the administrators of the, of the town bylaw. And it isn't a zoning bylaw, it's, it's a general bylaw. So they, but I, I agree, so that's definitely one of our, one of our concerns.
You can only put five gallons in a five gallon container.
One of, one of the things, when we reviewed it for a dollar store or some, one of those Dollar Tree, Dollar Store, I forget which one it was, we found that they couldn't get, for them to get trucks in there, they had to come through the adjacent Honeydew Park Lot, that's the only way they could get it in there. And as I remember it, they then couldn't get the truck out back onto West Center Street between the extremely steep slope of Friend Street and the extremely narrowness of Friend Street, which is, I think it's only one ground wide, maybe it's 20 feet wide, it's.
I would like to make the suggestion to be no exit onto West Center Street.
I, I fully agree that, well.
They could enter, there could be one way going up the hill, but if they're going to leave the property, they're going to come out through an ice.
Yeah, some, somehow or other, they.
But it's just an unsafe, there's too many.
Yeah. Okay, that's a, a good point, but what I'm, what I was getting to, is I don't know how they go to get cars in and out of that place, because he, the trucks, and as soon as you turn on a Friend Street, it, the reason they call it High Street is High Street is much, very much higher than, than West Center Street. Turn on a Friend Street, it's a very steep slope, so, so, it's, and, and the, and the width of it. comes in question, and you, and you're thinking about putting more than five gallons in a five gallon bucket, is they're just overloading the site in use of it.
I mean, twenty-eight, that's, twenty-eight units, one or two bedroom.
I'm not sure.
I mean, you're talking, you're talking, I mean, you, you know, twice the size of this room for each apartment. When you take in, or at least half again, would be the minimal, because you're gonna have a, your bedrooms are gonna be roughly twelve by fifteen, two of them, you're gonna have a living area which is twelve by twelve, and granted, they put kitchenettes in these places, so there's not much of a kitchen, but still gonna have a bathroom, at least one.
Maybe it's, it's. This is really true type, that somebody's, somebody thinks they can make some money doing this, so they're going to, they're going to do it. As, as long as they can maintain the, uh, compliance with the state environmental laws as far as the septic and everything, they're going to comply with the water resource. The, uh, the amount of traffic, of amount of cars and runoff from cars in that tight an area, there may be a question of whether they can, you know, they're not over, overtaxing that, but that'd be the, for the stormwater.
If you're talking twenty-eight units, they're probably going to be asking for at least fifty-six parking spaces.
I don't know, I don't think.
I mean, usually, usually it's two per.
Yeah.
Plus visitor.
There's no room on, on High Street to pack in cars, there's no room on, on, on West Center Street, none at all, so.
The lot next door to that has now got a sign posted on it too, on the other side of Friend Street.
Oh, okay.
That's had a sign up there.
It's always had a sign, hasn't it?
Yeah, but they put one now that you actually could see, it's not, not one of those mini political signs.
No, but, but it's, I know it's, it's been for sale for, for a long time, ever since they, they tore the houses down, it was for sale and nobody bought it.
I don't remember.
Yeah, okay.
That was before my time.
Yes, it's, okay, so we have, kind of, kind of put that in and we'll send it to the.
Okay, I'll work it out.
Building, yeah.
I'll send it to you.
Okay, uh, you got on here Charles Street Archivision Committee, I know Mike.
Before that, that was.
Yeah, it's on a farm aid.
No, no, I know, I just thought, well, we've got all the emails that you just might want to mention it or not, that's fine, um.
Why wouldn't we have anything to do with that?
You know, what, what Mike does is when something's coming up for occupancy, he, he throws a blanket email to everybody and.
It doesn't affect us, eh?
I, I don't, in a, in a farm aid, it doesn't affect us.
Okay, I just didn't know, so I figured I'd rather err on the side of caution.
I like the way Farrelly took and put drains at the end of the drivers, that's a first, without being asked. And those aren't even high pitched drivers.
That's all sand and it's good, it's a beautiful piece of ground.
Well, he holds about thirteen trailer loads of gravel out of there just to get the other sites ready so he could.
Okay, uh, subdivision updates.
Uh, they started the water for, what's his name, on Stony Road? They've got probably a hundred feet from, they've tied into the stub, running across the street, because the stub was on, if you're driving north, was on the left-hand side of Stony Road going up, you cut across, so he's running it up on the side of where the houses are, because the other side is all trees and, and it's stately. He's made it in about a hundred feet as of this afternoon, and I'm, I think he's probably talking to himself, because that's not, not very forgiven land up there.
So easy digging? It's a reason why they call it Stony.
I had a cousin who did the other end of Stony Road, still working in construction, and he did it for that other guy that did it. He says, I went home at night, my teeth ched, my hand hurt, it just was constant, just busting it, that hardpan and shale just to get down it.
Tell us.
So it looks like the, I mean, the poles are in, in one foundation, one house, and he hasn't started the back one. As far as Luke's, nothing's been done up there, he did get up there, it looks like he mowed, got somebody in there with a weed whacker, because everything's grown weeds, but I, I mean, there's grass and everything, all the retain, retention areas have got, you know, got good crabgrass growing in them, and so it's holding, so it, for that, I'm expecting anytime that he would be to see curb in being set, because everything's done, I mean, all, other than the one house that, what's his name's building? And they just started jumping on that one today, they haven't doing anything, I noticed there was a crew in there who worked today, but I mean, it's ready for sidewalks and, uh, all, everything's been graded, everything's been seeded, and everybody's got sprinkler systems, two of them got wells.
Yeah, cause he, he likes to get in and out, he, he doesn't.
He's pulled all his, all his equipment out of there, I, unless maybe with the, because of the COVID virus, they're having a hard time getting curb in, because I expect that, I expect, because that's basically, he's gonna put the curb in it, do the sidewalks, and pave it, and everything is done.
Okay. All right.
And, uh, anything else?
Copper Beach, did anybody go by there, they had road crews in there.
Well, yeah, they're.
Are they redo, are they paving?
They're, they're, they're cleaning up.
Okay.
That's, uh, that's something that Bishop Hashram has agreed to do, and he's doing it through the highway.
Is he gonna, you said he was, they were gonna grind it and repaint it?
They're, they're, a lot of places are just cutting and patching, kind of a pad, and one of the cul-de-sacs, it's a mess, I would just grind it.
But I don't think there's any, we talked about pockets, there's really nothing there, um, I don't think there's any others we got out there that's, I don't think anything. We haven't heard any more on that Lundine property, right? Was that sold, did those people buy it, or did they back up? Because what I did notice is that the fence on Brook's Place, there's a sign that's now that says it's a private lane.
But he.
It's unaccessible to.
He hasn't come in with the plans yet.
Yeah, but I noticed there never was a sign there before, now there is a sign.
But until he comes in and gets us to sign that plan, unless, unless they bought the whole thing, and then it'd be by everywhere. Because they, they, that was the thing that, uh, Eddie Jacobs was talking with him, and there was, there was some letters back, he, he had a, he had a letter of what he, the way he read the law, and I agreed with it so far, and then I, he added a few other things, because he, he stopped when, when it wasn't beneficial to him, he stopped, where you read the next couple pages, and there's a couple more things, and then we can't, we're sent back, and we haven't seen that plan yet, so, somebody could buy the whole, whole thing, uh, I think the bank might be a little, if they had an attorney to look into it, I think they'd be a little concerned, but it's, it was a good.
Sunset Avenue, they have cleared one lot, they, a second lot, and, uh, what's his name's, Hattie's, engineer, looks like he shot new delta points, uh, so that they can, and they, they staked out, I think, where the foundation is gonna be dug, but there are, they, they were up there one day trying to find things, and then when they finally got done, there was a bunch of new stakes, and a new delta point at the end of this cul-de-sac, so they evidently need reference to building that house.
Which one is that?
It's the second, I don't, I think it's lot two on Sunset Avenue Extension.
Sunset, okay, thank you.
I'm gonna guess it's lot two, because it's the one in the middle, so, some of the person is even three, and the others one on the block, but it's the one in the middle.
Okay.
You're a good mathematician.
I was always good in math.
Okay, all right then, uh, we, we got, uh, uh, something coming up with, they're, the, uh, somebody is looking to build on, uh, Lincoln Street, the Cumberland Farms property, and, uh, but they're proposing this time as, as warehousing. It was, the town changed it from agriculture to a business zone, when they were, when Terry Conway was talking about putting a shopping center in there. And, you know, and because that never happened, and twenty-five years later, uh, now, um, as we know, brick and mortar stores, um, endangered, they're, they're going out of business and then they're not building.
Probably an Amazon warehouse.
Well.
Probably, there'll be some sort of mail order.
It'll be, it, it is somebody who, uh, is looking to put in a warehouse type, type thing, it's, it's, it has good access through twenty-four and to four ninety-five and to one twenty-eight, so it's a, it's a, it's a good spot for it, but it was going to need to be rezoned to industrial use because warehousing is industrial. So, uh, and one of the things with this proposal is, in fact, a number of years ago, we were talking about, or somebody came in and they wanted to put a McDonald's where the, the then Village Barn, now is called the Eclectic Connection, Howard Dempsey's property. And, uh, when we told them they needed a, a traffic light, the McDonald's people, uh, ran, they didn't, they never pursued it. Now, this person is pursuing it, uh, and one of the things that they're pursuing is buying, they're, uh, having a company prepare for Mass Works Grant, right, Mass Works Grant, which, and they gotta get the application in by this, this fall, where they will, uh, pay, I don't believe it's by everything, but they will pay for a substantial amount to put a set of traffic lights in at Lincoln and Crescent Street, and also rebuild the road, make it, uh.
Reconfigure the intersection?
Yeah, what they do is, they, they're going to be buying Howard Dempsey's house, and the, so Lincoln Street will go north, and then when, just before it gets to West Center Street, it will come over and line up with Crescent Street, so we'll have a, have an intersection rather than a, than an offset intersection. So it is, it's, it's the proper alignment. They're also talking about road improvements from Route twenty-four down to this, and, and they're talking an alternative of going all the way to Market Basket.
I would like to see him at least.
I think you're telling.
At least to Crescent, to, to West Street.
Yeah, at least.
Because you got the bridge, you got culvert work that's gonna be on it, unless they really want to think they're gonna make money.
Ideally, it'd be, I'd like to see it go to, go to Market Basket.
Yes, but at least make it to Crescent Street.
Oh, whoa.
Not to Crescent Street, I mean, at least to West Street.
Yeah, right, West Street, yeah.
Because you're only talking, what, another two hundred feet?
Yeah, and, uh, the, uh, now, I don't know whether this, you know, these people wanted to put up a forty B, whether any road improvements there will have an effect on it, probably will, I know at Route twenty-four, right at the beginning, it won't because of this church property, and we have a cemetery there, so that isn't going to be taken there or taken.
But I think the Shell Station, in our discussions, is well aware that they could have part of this taken out.
So, so something, something is, is going to be going on, and we're going to have to have a special, uh, a public hearing, rather, a public hearing, and to re-review this and make a recommendation to the, uh, town meeting, we're not in a position now to, to, we don't have to make a decision on it now, but at that time, we are going to, to have to, they're looking to fast track it in getting the town meeting sometime in September, so this, this thing could happen very, very quickly also.
I'd like to, and I, at least get it re, into the record tonight, that any construction that's done, anything built on Lincoln Street, no trucks can go south. They're in construction, after construction, we had enough problems in town with all those trucks that were going to that place in Bridgewater, and we didn't have control of them. So if we restrict them from going any from, from their entrance or wherever these, basically Dempsey's, south on Lincoln Street, so everything has to come out to, all trucking must come out to one oh six. I'd like to see if someplace, or at least remember to have that, because those trucks, when you were getting, when they were first started that place out in, in Bridgewater, I had thirty to forty trips a day going past my house.
Oh, yeah.
Never mind, there were still some that were still going to the light, and why they was thought they were saving time, because I rode, I, I checked them one day, got behind one truck, and then I got behind another one at the end of Bryant Street, followed him through the traffic, what a traffic light, looked down there, and he dumped his load by the time the guy that came down Bryant Street. But I, I think we can control with the developer that all his trucks, does that Bridgewater, Bridgewater rain him sand and gravel, they don't care.
Well, that, that can be put in the, in the, in the building comment.
Yeah, but I wanted to bring it up tonight, because I happened to think of that this afternoon after.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good point, I, I.
And I think that'll also be a selling point to people south of the location, because then they're not gonna have the traffic. And it will stop any cross terminal type stuff, if, if the warehouse on this is gonna be dealing with something on Scotland Street, or, was it Elm Street, Bridgewater?
One, one of the things with this site, which is, is going to be beneficial, is they can have a, and in access only to the sixty-foot right away that they have on the Shell Station, which is why they, they kept it there, so they could immediately pull traffic off, so that wouldn't even go to the, go to the light. Any, any, any vehicle coming out of there, they're going to have to go through the light, and, and the only way they could be able to do it is, is with a light. If you tried to have a traffic come out of there and take a left-hand turn, if, you know, you can, you wait five, ten minutes before you find that, that, that spot to, to get out, so. The, the traffic light, as far as I can see, is gonna be very.
They dug a what, dug a bunch of holes down here, they got an excavator that's down near Russo's, yeah, but they dug a couple.
Are they on Russo's or on the Comblin's side?
Comblin's side, they dug one close to the Shell Station, to West Center Street, there's one hole right off of Lincoln Street, but the machine is down where Russo used to have all his plants on the opposite side of the.
I, I know they, they, they go on ahead with, you know, investigating, they want to see, make sure the land is good, that, that kind of stuff, because if they can't get a area that will support a septic system as well as the drainages, they're gonna be talking of turning an awful lot of that into, uh, imperious, they're gonna have some, you get a big warehouse and a big parking lot, that's an awful lot of runoff, so they, they got a lot of, they got a lot of engineering to do to make it, to make it.
And it's recent, because it's recent diggings.
No, they're, they're, they're doing something down there, I, I do not know exactly what they're doing, but they, they are, are doing something. So that, that's just something to, uh.
Do you want to go to town, do you want to say, uh, once, once? Do we have to have, do they meet for us, do we have to make a recommendation or?
We, we have, when the, the selectmen are going to have to send the, uh, the warrant article, the proposed change to us, then we have the public hearing for that. And then we report to the, to the moderator, to the town meeting, with our recommendation.
How did you get that together?
What, what do you need for, you need three weeks?
At least, because we got really messed up before, yeah, so.
So if, uh.
We have to get.
Mine is the first one goes in fourteen days before. As long as the first one goes in 14 days before the meeting, we should have.
But you need almost a week before that.
Yeah, because you gotta get it to the enterprise.
To do the coordinating with the enterprise.
Yeah.
You used to be able to do it, you know, drop it off at Judy Mead's house. Care of special nail blocks out there. The next day it was done. It was, none of this is electronic stuff.
I think a lot of people are still being burlowed and, you know, working from home and stuff. So that even adds to the timeline.
So, so the selectmen are also discussing it tonight. It's on the agenda, so they're discussing it tonight. And if they decide to go forth with it, it's gonna be coming up pretty quick.
I mean, I mentioned, I don't know how they're gonna work. You know, traffic light is great, but now you're taking your time away from 106. So I, I don't know how they're gonna do it. Is that, that area needs five lanes, you know?
Well, I think they're proposing four, you know, two each way.
Yeah. But you've got a lot of electonists going on Crescent Street. And you're gonna have, I don't know, a lot on Lincoln Street. I don't know, that would be the, you know, I'd have a hard time, you know, without a lot. I don't care if they're pushing it forward. It doesn't, that's definitely on their part. I don't know, but if they don't, you know, if they come in with no traffic studies or tell us what they're doing or.
I believe they've already got a traffic study going.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, how many lanes are gonna, Mass Works is not a given. That's, that, you, you know, if you're lucky, you might get it the second or third time around. So what are they gonna do in between? Or are they gonna do the improvements?
Well, yeah, they're, they're just trying to get the whole thing going.
They gotta have that ducts in there.
Yeah.
Just because you're an area, they don't really.
Gotta be somebody with some money.
Oh, yeah.
Because you're talking big stuff.
But I was telling you too, you're gonna go, I mean, they're gonna be between me and Mass Highway, they're gonna be looking at another year and a half of funds.
Oh, yeah.
It'd almost be easy to take up on a new rental rent.
Oh, no. That's even more painful.
Yeah.
One of the good things with getting that light in there is this proposed sports facility they're talking about putting up there, where they're gonna be having soccer games and stuff. So if they get an out-of-town team come in and, you know, it's like a whole bunch of cars, you know how they have the parade of all cars? They, they go to an out-of-town game or something. The game is over. They got a traffic light there, they're gonna stand a chance a day and get out and go to 24. But with that, that, I, I know what, with the high school football game gets out, you know, the parking lot, it just, you know, it just all empties out at, at one time. And if you don't, if you don't have something up there that's gonna help the people get out onto the street, it's gonna be, it's gonna be frustrating. We know all the back roads, but the out-of-towner who comes in, you know, say that they're playing, say Foxborough coming over for a game, they don't know where all those things are. And they're gonna wanna get back on Route 24 to go. So they're putting lights in, in there.
It sounds good.
Yeah, it, it, it sounds good. But the only way we're gonna do it, because the town, we know what Howard Street intersection is, is costing the town to do. The town isn't gonna.
Yeah, but the problem is that intersection is about four times the work it is in. They have to, if you're talking four and five lanes and.
You're talking like 3,000 cars on 106 and right now nobody's taking a left out of the side street. So it's barely continuous traffic. Well, you know, you put in a light, you lose automatically about 10% capacity because of the red time and everything else. Plus you get the side streets, you know, the whole, I just, I don't know. I mean, that's what I mean, I got, that's what killed McDonald's because that light there without any improvements was gonna back up on 24. They couldn't do anything about it.
And the parking lot configuration, if they had to call it, everywhere to drive through, why?
Would've been on Lincoln Street. Well, they just by blocking off Crescent Street at Honeydew today, 106 was backed down 24. Because they had it shut off at Honeydew. Because they were grinding it and I went that way, drove through and it was, they were right onto 24 down the exit lane. They had a cop standing, President West, he should've been directing traffic at West Street just to let traffic in. Because that's what was bothering them. You get people that are coming out trying to go up and, because you got, already got shut off on one end of Crescent Street and then you take the left to West, now the other end of Crescent Street shut off. Now they're sending, well, President's gonna go through Brockton.
And that'll be the problem down, I mean, if the lights don't work and you back up to 24, the state's gonna be shutting down. I, you know, they don't care if that's a town signal, they'll shut down the signal. Now we got warehousing with no signals and, you know. I don't know, I mean, there's, there's a lot of.
It's gonna be properly engineered, definitely.
Yeah, I mean, but yeah, I mean, somebody's gonna, if they're gonna zone and change there, they gotta, you know, hopefully they have the ducts in there, but I've got a feeling.
I mean, when Conway was gonna do it, he had an elaborate traffic signal thing that was roughed in. And that was gonna be like five lanes. But he wasn't gonna change the angle between Lincoln and Crescent. That's something we came up with at the McDonald's. By a former McDonald's.
Yeah.
And you're talking, making a wide intersection there. But anything coming from 24 tractor trailer, well, you said they can go in through the Shell Station. But you're talking, if some truck missed the Shell Station, they're making, he's gonna, you're gonna need a wide radius for a tractor trailer. Because most of those tractor trailers are those California trucks that have got the 30-foot tractors with sleepers and another 45, 50-foot trailer behind them.
They can do the same as we made them do in the Center of Town and what they did up on Manly Street with, with that, with that, rather than coming up and make a tight circle, that.
But I've even, I've even seen those long trailers have problems, you know, if they don't swing right. Because you're talking, what, 80, almost 100-foot of rig? By the time you go bumper to bumper.
Yeah, those corners can be more than five-foot radiuses on Crescent and Lincoln?
Yeah, it's that.
I mean, the more.
It's a 90-degree turn.
Yeah, no, that's, that's why when they, when they do come up with that intersection, they've, they've got to address that sort of truck. Like you say, one.
It's gonna have, well, even coming off the highway to turn into the Shell Station. They're gonna have to have a lane that's like an extra lane that that truck can come off the ramp and get over to make the swing in. So you might as well, you're talking five lanes of traffic all the way to 24.
I, I, I mean, that's it, I mean, I know what you have to tell us. I mean, I don't know how you do, do it without taking all of us. Because five lanes is what, 60 feet right there? Plus, you know, they want shoulders, 64, 70 feet. And right now it's what, 30 if you're lucky, 35.
And then you're talking sidewalks on both sides.
Leo, yeah.
That down here is 52, I'm not sure that it's 50 all the way up. But I know that, I know this section is a 52-foot layout. And so.
So what does people like to do? It's another five pounds of sugar.
Yeah.
Well, could we use a sugar?
I know, but there's still a lot to eat.
And then we'll have, what, six traffic lights within three miles? Five, six?
Six. Seven, actually, oh, eight on 106. Count the other two on the other side. Boom in Metropolis.
They should ask for a Dunkin's McDonald's, because we need more Dunkin' Donuts.
Dunkin's is closing places all over the country.
Well, they're with their own competition. And they, 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 they put it in. And they've got this one, Ajax has got both gas stations, the Shell and the one on the other.
They're all, this one, the one across the Market Basket and the two gas stations, all over the same guy.
Yeah. And he owns a couple dozen more.
Yeah.
He owns, he owns a lot of, a whole thing or something. I don't know what it's called. So to, to wrap this up, there's, there's, there's gotta be a lot of engineering addressed and.
Our resident traffic design expert's gonna have a lot to look at.
I'll let him know.
Hope this is your company.
We can't get involved.
Well, I, I know that the one, the, the developer has had some experience with it and he's got them on board. It's called TEC. Get one, that's him. I saw the.
I was trying to run.
I looked, I looked at, I looked up their webpage and then.
Kevin, oh, God, Michael.
I, I.
They're techless, the engineer. He always calls TEC. They're, they're up our way too. Up in, we're not in there. Kevin, Kevin Andrew.
A while ago that I got the, the word, so.
You got two of them there, some employees.
So, yeah, if they're trying to track, pass tractors for the zoning, it's gonna be very tight. And I'm sure some people will have concerns.
That's why my thing is with restricting the truck traffic, at least most of the people that are on, down that other end that have complained on the other times when we've changed zoning.
There were, the only way we could do it for the, I think for the construction is no problem, but after that, I'm not sure, sure you could. That'd be something considered because we take state money for the fuel tax for the chapter 91?
Yeah, which is, which is.
Oh, 93.
90.
But you can restrict turns out of the site, you can make those, see?
I mean, the road isn't, the road isn't, Lincoln Street is worse than any of the others. It, it's barely 24 feet wide.
Yeah.
If it's that.
And there's Carlos, he gets even worse.
Yeah, South Elm, then you get down a river. And given that bridge will work on itself, Street. Because a lot of times they're hauling both ways. That guy in Bridgewater, Bridgewater rain him sand. Hauls the gravel in and hauls the loam out. So he's hauling both ways and then when they need loam, he hauls it back to them. I know most of the drivers by first name that come by my house. I'm gonna have to get my old hairdryer out, paint it black and stand there like this. Like he did that on the North Shore, slowed everybody on the street till they realized it was a hairdryer.
Okay, I think we talked about that for, we have some, we gotta, we gotta pay Donna. I'll put it for her. So I'll pay, entertain a motion for Donna's pay, which will be for the period ending 8/22/2020. We got here, a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for July 1st and for July 15th.
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Okay, oh, one other thing. I sent out. Wait, what's this bill done?
The, is that for the enterprise?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's gotta be signed.
We have a bill for the enterprise, this is for the advertising for.
Bada. That's the money we incumbent.
Oh, okay.
All right.
This is.
This is the end of it. The encumbrances are now clear once we process that one.
I'll entertain a motion to, so we'll pay the bill. All those in favor? Do we, excuse me, a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yep.
Aye.
Vote is unanimous.
Need to get like they used to have at the restaurants with the, with the wire and the clips on them.
I just figured in the bank we could have a couple of, two, you know? And put it in the two.
Yes. Yeah. Why? Yeah. Okay, yeah. Um. Okay, I sent out West Meadow, did you see that? Apparently.
That sounds interesting.
Yeah. Did you look on, on the, on the plan with the marker? He is, I think, engineer, wasn't giving a good, yeah?
I just like, the thing is, is the city agreed to 590 feet and they drew the plan up for 700 and something.
Okay, while we were all kind of locked down, I had signed a bill for the minutes book. And Donna was able to pay for it. I'd like to have a motion to reaffirm that we paid the bill for $139.76.
Some move.
Which is for the.
Second.
Minutes.
Minutes book.
Which is where if anybody finds it.
Yeah, it's. Do you have a motion, second? All those in favor?
Yeah, aye. A bargain at that price.
Okay, yeah, so that, that, that thing with.
It sounds, it sounds like it's an open and shut, the city slamming the door on.
Yes. Okay.
Do we want to reference that letter or not?
Yeah, we, it, that was, that was the, we had a copy. It was, it was a public document that.
Okay.
At that point and we discussed it. So that's still an ongoing, ongoing thing. The tolling, Jim, you say that the tolling is, is in effect until the governor calls the.
Yeah, until the state receives a call.
State, okay. Because there was some question that it was, I had heard that it only would go to July or something. Okay. Because we had, I had been in discussion with the tolling for West Meadow States or whatever it's called. And he was trying to get us to hold the public hearing. And I said, we would not hold the public hearing until such time as we had an approved roadway from Brockton and the plans were signed and recorded at the Register D. And then there was a couple other things also in it. But this particular thing, that it was pointed out, the road doesn't, doesn't go to there. We have not approved any of those that goes to the.
And they're questioning him, making it go more than they approved.
Right.
So I kinda.
So I, I think it's safe to say that he has not fulfilled the requirements that we have deemed necessary.
Only one member of the planning board has to abstain because I think it's a mess. And remember, when we were doing B.C. Way, the kids said, well, I'm on the, I'm on the, I'm on the planning board in the city of Brock. I don't know if, if that's an appointment type thing or.
Okay, if there are any further business coming before the board?
Move, who's your?
Thank you.
Third.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good, vote is unanimous.